Three out of the four recommendations we had, one being the storm management, since there would be a pretty significant increase in impervious area. So I'll let them touch on that as well.
Mike, would you like to discuss City Engineer Fordice's memo?
Yeah, I can cover it a little bit. So essentially, as Chris mentioned, we are still looking for some storm water data as they are doing in addition to the building. As Jeff laid out in his memo, this, these are just the rules we have to follow for storm water management process. Talking with Jeff, we really don't see a major issue with this overall, but we do want to see their plans and how everything's going to handle it, just due to the size of what they're building and then their location, since they are close to a natural stream and we got all storm water running in front of it. We think this project is feasible, but we are, just want to make it official with that data from them.
Okay. I have a motion here to acknowledge the receipt of the report dated September 17th, 2020, from the City Planner Atkin, and a memo dated September 18th, 2020, from the City Engineer Fordice. Bill Beardsley, would you move that? And to Mr. Young, would you second that?
Yes, I will move to acknowledge receipt of the report from City Planner Atkin, as well as a memo from Mr. Fordice.
Second. Katrina, would you take the vote?
Commissioner Beardsley?
Aye.
Commissioner Carroll?
Aye.
Councilmember Gearball?
Aye.
Chief Hart?
Aye.
Commissioner Hef? Absent. Mayor Marl? Absent. Commissioner Troika?
Aye.
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
And Commissioner Fosdick?
Aye.
You have seven ayes and two absents.
The motion has passed. Now is the time for the applicant or developer, if you would like to take a few minutes to explain what's going on.
Okay, yes, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. My name is Dennis Loy, and I believe the doctor is also connected to Zoom. Anyhow, the building, we are matching what's there. The, it has a very pretty low file, low profile, and we're adding, it has split face concrete block that's been painted, and then it has a wood fascia above the block. So we're pretty much carrying the exact theme of what's around the building, and the building is very nicely landscaped. It's, they've got a couple animals shaped out of the, the planning, which is, I'm sure has taken a great deal of time and effort, but it is very, a very nice environment. And what we're trying to do is not detract from it, but just increase its size so that they have a better facility to accommodate the puppies and kittens and whatever. So the drainage from the building currently is, has, it has internal drains that I haven't investigated, but that's what we will hire a consultant to do, is they are draining to a catch base in the parking lot, and then from there, it is dispersed over the land somehow. So we need to investigate that. We will probably be adding a couple drains on the roof also, and the idea was that we'd probably connect to those leaders that are in the, above the ceiling now. So we'll see how that goes, and we'll report, and we'll provide that information on the drawings. If you have any questions additional, I'd be very happy to answer them. So that's all I have.
Thank you. I also hear, I start, I have a motion here, there's, I have a motion, or I have a motion for, to open the public hearing.
Actually-
Dan, go ahead, go ahead.
Scott, I have some questions. So if we have any questions, we should ask them now of the developer?
Yeah, that would be fine.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Quick question, because it's not clear, and we don't have the actual drawings of the addition to the building. Where exactly will that be located in the additional parking, towards the rear or to the north?
There'll be four, four spaces added to the rear of the building, and the building is being added on to on the north side.
Towards the front or towards the back?
You will see part, 34 foot of it on the, from the street, and we will be landscaping it similar to what's been done, and we'll show that in the landscape plan.
Okay, so the entire length of the north side of the building will be increased, is what you're saying?
It'll be a wider building, correct?
Okay, thank you. That's it for me.
Guess we move this around a little bit. Katrina, do you want to take a roll and see who else has questions for the developer?
Sure. Commissioner Beardsley, do you have comments?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Carroll?
No question.
And Councilmember Gearball, did you have any additional?
No, you're maintaining the tree, the big tree in front and all that, so that's not being changed, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Chief Hart?
No questions.
Commissioner Hef is absent, Mayor Marl is absent, Commissioner Troika?
No questions.
Commissioner Young?
No questions.
And Commissioner Fosdick?
No questions.
Okay.
Okay, there is a motion to open the public hearing. Dan, would you make that, would you move that? And Dan, would you second that?
Which Dan?
Dan, I'm sorry, Dan Strickland.
So I will move to open the public hearing.
And I'll second.
Very good.
Commissioner Beardsley?
Aye.
Commissioner Carroll?
Aye.
Councilmember Gearball?
Yes.
Chief Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Hef? Absent. Mayor Marl? Absent. Commissioner Troika?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
And Commissioner Fosdick?
Yes.
You have seven ayes and two absents.
Motion passed. Mike or Katrina, is there anybody out there that would like to talk, you know?
I do not show any.
All right, there's a motion to close the public hearing. Commissioner Troika, would you move that? And Commissioner Carroll, would you second that?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
And Commissioner Beardsley?
Aye.
Commissioner Carroll?
Aye.
Councilmember Gearball?
Aye.
Chief Hart?
Aye.
Commissioner Hef? Absent. Mayor Marl? Absent. Commissioner Troika?
Aye.
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
And Commissioner Fosdick?
Aye.
You have seven ayes and two absents.
It has passed, the public hearing is closed. Now here, in, in part of my notes here, I, here's where we can ask questions by the commission for Atkin, for Chris, or Mike, or anything. Anybody have any more questions?
So I had one question. I think this is a good plan, I support it. I'm just curious about in practice, how do we get the storm water approval? Is that just going to be administrative? Who actually passes judgment on that if we approve both preliminary and final site plan tonight?
Yes, sir, this is Mike. In my opinion, I think it depends on development. Bigger developments, I would like probably the storm site, the storm water details come back to you guys for review, since overall, this is more of a minor one. If you guys are okay with it and you approve it with conditions, I would like to see the condition of administrative, administrative approval for storm water.
And that's fine with me, that's what I would expect.
Commissioner Beardsley, do you have any more questions?
No, I don't, thank you.
Mr. Carroll?
No questions.
Councilmember Gearball?
None at this time.
Okay, Chief Hart?
None at this time.
Let's see, Commissioner Hef is out, Commissioner Troika?
No more.
Commissioner Young?
No questions.
Commissioner Fosdick, no questions. Thank you all. All right, we have a motion to approve or not approve with the conditions of a combined preliminary site plan for the construction of 1,032 square foot addition into the existing animal center of Saline Building, and an additional 720 square foot of parking lot, adding, adding four new spaces located on a one acre lot at 7,300 North Ann Arbor Street, Saline, Michigan, parcel 181336201009. Chief Hart, will you move that? And Dean, Councilmember Gearball, will you second that?
Yes, and would you like the conditions spelled out, or are we just going to say with conditions?
Just say what conditions, and you're doing this to approve it, correct?
Correct.
And Dean, do you second that?
Yeah, move, move to approve with conditions as identified by Carlisle-Wartman and the administrative review of the, what do you want to call it?
I would say approve with conditions as laid out in the Carlisle-Wartman report, subject to administrative approval.
Okay. I second that.
Katrina, would you take the vote?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Beardsley?
Aye.
Commissioner Carroll?
Aye.
Councilmember Gearball?
Aye.
Chief Hart?
Aye.
Commissioner Hef? Absent. Mayor Marl? Absent. Commissioner Troika?
Aye.
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
And Commissioner Fosdick?
Aye.
Seven ayes, two absents.
The motion has passed as approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you for consideration, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening.
All right, we'll move on, go ahead. Any more comment or anything else? We'll move on to 20-16 ordinance 18819 to add a new section 6.16 to the slings zoning ordinance to allow the temporary uses and structures and deletion of redundant provisions from section 5.12 and a subsection of 5.042. Mike, you want to tell us what's happening here?
Yes, I'll give you a quick little rundown. As noted in the memo, Attorney Forsey is the one that came up with most of this memo, as he was part of this well before I started with the city. But in summary, this is just to give the city a little bit more control over our vendor markets that happen in town. The best example is the events that happen over the summer, especially at Baker's Nook. Currently, we don't have a lot of regulatory authority, if they do a lot of food trucks and things like that over there. This will give us a little more power to help manage that process, so it's a little win-win for each situation. So we can make sure whatever's going on with either Baker's Nook or anywhere else in the city makes sense for that area, and then they follow some regulations. So that's what this ordinance is laying out.
Okay, there's a motion to acknowledge receipt of the September 16, 2020 memo from interim city manager Mike Green. Dan, Carroll, will you move that? And well, Troika, would you second that?
I move, we accept the memo.
Okay.
And I second.
Katrina, would you take the vote?
Commissioner Beardsley?
Yes.
Commissioner Carroll?
Yes.
Councilmember Gearball?
Yes.
Chief Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Hef? Absent. Mayor Marl? Absent. Commissioner Troika?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
And Commissioner Fosdick?
Yes.
You have seven ayes and two absents.
Motion's passed. At this time, do you guys have questions for, for Mike on this change?
So I have one question. I was looking at the proposed ordinance, and one of the requirements for getting the temporary permission as a site plan, is that, that seems kind of extreme for like a food truck, is that, does that mean what it says?
It depends, your interpretation of site plan is probably what we normally see when we're dealing with developments. For this type of aspect, it's, we treat it kind of we do when people put in decks, if, or I mean, if you give us a driveway, we pretty much just need to see a very preliminary drawing. If you pulled up Google Maps and just printed that out and drew where you expected everything to go, we would accept that. We pretty much just need a very general idea of where everything's going.
Okay, that sounds good, thank you.
Okay, also, there'll be no planning, commission approval, or now acknowledgement of any of these temporary.
Correct, yeah, this would all go through administrative staff.
Okay.
And Mike, can you clarify on some of the issues? So you talked about food trucks, some of the frequency, so like the Baker's Nook example that we talk about, how often, how many weekends in a row, that type of thing which could occur? I think that was one of the concerns.
Yeah, let me check real quick, see if we have that listed in here.
Doesn't mention food trucks.
Yeah. We probably count food trucks as like promotional business activities. But as for frequency, I don't think it's directly laid out in here, so it could potentially be an every weekend thing.
Yeah, and I think that was one of the bigger concerns, we were talking about this frequency, so that might be something that council will talk about when it comes up.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I could add something, I'm on the ordinance task force.
Oh, that's right.
Most certainly.
If I'm not mistaken, it's been a while since we've looked at this, but if I'm not mistaken, there's a separate ordinance that either came out or is coming out on food trucks. And, yeah, I don't think this one, it was meant to govern food trucks as much as it is pop-ups and different seasonal events and that sort of thing.
Thank you, Bill, happy you're on code review task force longer than I've been.
No problem.
Yeah, I apologize, when you mentioned that, Mike, I thought it was somehow incorporated into this.
I have a question. Is there any-
Go ahead.
And under C, C point four, you know, permit inspection fees shall be set by resolution of the city council. I mean, my thought on it is, because I live on the west side of town, you know, he has a food truck out there two times a week, every single week, and only if it's some big food truck, you know, that, you know, that brings in like the Island Noodles brought in a ton of people. So yeah, it was pretty crazy over there, but like the fried vegetable truck that's here, I didn't see anybody at it today. So is there a general permit that they're allowed to get for once a season, or is this every single time? Because doesn't that feel like it's trying to, to stifle business? I mean, if they have to apply for a permit every single time?
I might have to, Katrina, as I know the clerk's office handles this a lot, do you know how often Terry requires this?
No, unfortunately, I don't.
I'm pretty sure, just to say again, food trucks, I think, are covered by something else, as long as they're on private property, I don't think any permit is required at all other than health department. So I think on the food truck piece.
There is a permit process.
Yeah, there is, because I see them.
Okay, that is part of this, though, right?
But, yeah, I think we're talking about two separate things somehow.
Okay, then let's talk about the, the fair that he had three times last summer, that's what this is, this, that's what this is about.
There we go, yeah, that's a much better example.
Exactly.
Yep, and I don't think there's any process in place for that right now, which is what I think we're trying to address here, correct, Mike?
Correct, yep, correct, correct.
Now, I'm looking at 45 days in duration on paid transient and seasonal sales, is that what we're looking at here? So duration would be 45 days, comma, two times in 12 months. Is it 45 days or two times in 12 months?
It could be 45 days twice, is what that says.
So 90 days out of, out of the year, we can potentially have some type of a transient sale going down there. So I don't know if that helps Commissioner Young or not, but it looks like it's, it's for quite a lengthy process.
Thank you.
I like the tone.
Now, does this cover other temporary sales, like sidewalk sales, or if someone puts a tent outside their business?
I want to say, the answer is yes and no. Sidewalk sales are a little different animal, but if someone puts a tent outside their business, yes, this will be one of those aspects that relates to it, because it has to have a direct, essentially have a, have a direct relation to that business. So I couldn't go, for example, I couldn't go sit outside Smokehouse and sell knitted scarves without their permission, and since that has nothing to do with their business.
Well, could they put outdoor tables and sell their products outside?
On sidewalks, sidewalks are a different permit. If you want to do something, especially downtown on sidewalks, it's a different process than this. This, I think, would be more tied towards private parking lots.
Section four actually notes sidewalk sales, one of the things this governs.
Okay. Let's see.
Well, for instance, Bush's every once in a while will have their outdoor cooker, and they'll cook up ribs, and which you can buy, so.
Yeah, so how Bill just mentioned, prohibited sales, so it'd be part D, sales of merchandise unrelated to principal use unless operated by or in support of, as a fundraiser or nonprofit. So other than that, I don't think you can do sidewalk sales via this.
Any more questions? All right, there is a motion to open the public hearing. Commissioner Young, would you move that? And Commissioner Beardsley, would you second that?
I move to open the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Katrina, would you take the vote?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Beardsley?
Aye.
Commissioner Carroll?
Aye.
Councilmember Gearball?
Aye.
Chief Hart?
Aye.
Commissioner Hef? Absent. Mayor Marl? Absent. Commissioner Troika?
Aye.
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
And Commissioner Fosdick?
Aye.
You have seven ayes and two absents.
This motion has passed. All public comments to be heard are limited to three minutes per person. Mike or Katrina, anybody out there?
No.
Okay, Commissioner Young and Commissioner Beardsley, would you make the motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
I second that.
Katrina, would you take the vote?
Commissioner Beardsley?
Aye.
Commissioner Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner, sorry, Councilmember Gearball?
Aye.
Chief Hart?
Aye.
Commissioner Hef? Absent. Mayor Marl? Absent. Commissioner Troika? Commissioner Young?
Aye.
And Commissioner Fosdick?
Aye.
You have seven ayes and two absents.
Motion is carried. Any more questions or discussion? Commissioner Beardsley?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Carroll?
No.
Councilmember Gearball?
I don't believe so.
Chief Hart?
No, sir.
Commissioner Hef is absent, Mayor Marl is absent, Commissioner Troika?
No.
Commissioner Young?
No.
Mr. Fosdick, no. All right, there is a motion to recommend to the city council that they adopt the ordinance number nine, I'm sorry, 819, to add a new section 6.16 to the slings zoning ordinance, and allow for temporary uses and structures and deletion of redundant provisions in section 512 and section 5.042. Commissioner Gearball, or Councilmember Gearball, would you move that? And Chief Hart, would you second that?
Move to recommend and to adopt.
Second.
Okay, Katrina, would you take the vote?
Commissioner Beardsley?
Aye.
Commissioner Carroll?
Aye.
Councilmember Gearball?
Aye.
Chief Hart?
Aye.
Commissioner Hef? Absent. Mayor Marl? Absent. Commissioner Troika?
Aye.
Commissioner Young?
Nay.
And Commissioner Fosdick?
Aye.
Okay, you have six ayes, one no, and two absent.
I believe it carries. Thank you. We'll move on to 20-17 ordinance 820 to make consistent, regular, make consistent the regulation of garage sales and business licensing with amendments to the city zoning code by deleting subsection 71-49E of chapter 71 BLIT, and amending subsection 22-278 of chapter 22 Business of the City of Saline Code of Ordinances. Mike, would you kind of lead us off here?
Yes, sir, this one's pretty straightforward. This is a, just a council action to pretty much clean up the ordinances. The one you just reviewed was for the zoning ordinance, this one's just for the general code of ordinances. So this is just some cleanup language for the previous ordinance. So if that one gets adopted by council, then this one has to get adopted as well.
Okay. There is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the September 16, 2020 memo from interim city manager Mike Green. Chief Hart, would you move that? And Commissioner Young, would you second that?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Katrina, would you take the vote?
Commissioner Beardsley?
Aye.
Commissioner Carroll?
Aye.
Councilmember Gearball?
Aye.
Chief Hart?
Aye.
Commissioner Hef? Absent. Mayor Marl? Absent. Commissioner Troika?
Aye.
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
And Commissioner Fosdick?
Aye.
Seven ayes and two absents.
There is a motion to open the public hearing. Commissioner Young, would you move that? And Commissioner Carroll, would you second that?
I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
Katrina, would you do the vote, take the vote?
Commissioner Beardsley?
Aye.
Commissioner Carroll?
Aye.
Councilmember Gearball?
Aye.
Chief Hart?
Aye.
Commissioner Hef? Absent. Mayor Marl? Absent. Commissioner Troika?
Aye.
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
And Commissioner Fosdick?
Aye.
Seven ayes and two absents.
Motion is passed. All public comments to be heard, limited to three minutes per person. Mike or Katrina, or anybody show up by now?
I do not see anything.
Okay, Commissioner Young, would you move to close the hearing? And Carroll, would you second that?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Beardsley?
Aye.
Commissioner Carroll?
Aye.
Councilmember Gearball?
Aye.
Chief Hart?
Aye.
Commissioner Hef? Is absent. Mayor Marl? Absent. Commissioner Troika?
Aye.
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
And Commissioner Fosdick?
Aye.
Seven ayes, two absents.
Motion is passed. All right, any questions? Commissioner Beardsley?
No, thank you.
Mr. Carroll?
No.
Councilmember Gearball?
Yes, question for Bill, there was no, this is, as Mike said, just clean up, there Yes, question for Bill. There was no, this is, as Mike said, just cleanup. There wasn't anything that was eliminated or changed?
I don't, I don't even know if we saw this piece of it. And if so, it's been long enough. I don't recall. Sorry.
That's okay. Thank you.
Chief Hart?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Haff, absent. Mayor Morrow, absent. Commissioner Troika?
Aye. No questions, sorry.
No questions? All right, no question. Okay, that's good. Commissioner Young?
No questions.
Thank you. And Commissioner Fosdick, no questions. All right. There is a motion to recommend to the city council that they adopt ordinance number eight twenty to make a consistent regulation, to make consistent a regulation of garage sales and business licensing with amendments to the zoning, slings zoning code by deleting section seven one dash four ninety of chapter seventy one blight and amending subsection twenty two dash twenty seven eight of chapter twenty two business of the city of Selene or the code, Selene code of ordinances. Troika, would you, would you move that? And Dean Gearball, would you, would you second that?
Yes, I move to recommend that we adopt as stated in the agenda.
Second, Mike, just a recommendation when this goes to council, make sure you have those documents and show where the highlighted are being striked out so that they understand exactly what's being removed out of the ordinances.
Yeah, but I work with Mr. Forshi. He's the one that drafted them.
Okay, thank you.
Katrina, would you take the vote?
Mr. Beardsley?
Yes.
Commissioner Carroll?
Yes.
Councilmember Gearball?
Yes.
Chief Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Haff, absent. Mayor Morrow, absent. Commissioner Troika?
Aye.
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
And Commissioner Fosdick?
Aye.
Seven ayes, two absent.
Motion is passed. Let's go to new business. Twenty dash eighteen, application from Damian Farrell for a one-year final site plan extension for the Faradine condominium development located at two oh seven Monroe Street, Selene, Michigan, forty one seven six parcel eighteen eighteen oh one one seven oh oh one five. Mike, would you care to comment on this?
Mike, before you comment, Mr. Chair, I have a conflict and so I will not be participating in this matter.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Troika?
Yes, sir. So I'll take it from here. So this is, this is a big administrative thing based on feedback from our attorneys. It's recommended that we also get final site plan extensions approved as well, as noted in these memos for these next two items, actually. City council has already granted PUD approvals for each of these projects. So it's just advice of council that we also get official site plan extension approvals as well. So that's what these are following up on. And as you can see, we're recommending that they both get approved as both developers have done work on the properties. But unfortunately, due to COVID, they cannot follow through on meeting the current site plan deadlines. So they're just seeking an extension.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Carroll and Commissioner, Commissioner Carroll and Commissioner Young, would you move and second acknowledge receipt of the September sixteen twenty twenty memo from interim city manager Mike Green?
So move.
Second.
Katrina, would you take the vote?
Yes, sir.
Just a, let me change it to memos to what should cover both of the items.
Each item has their own action item number.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Commissioner Beardsley?
I just tried Dan. Yeah, aye.
Commissioner Carroll?
Aye.
Councilmember Gearball?
Aye.
Chief Hart?
Aye.
Commissioner Haff, absent. Mayor Morrow, absent. Commissioner Troika is abstained.
Aye.
And Commissioner Fosdick?
Aye.
You have six ayes, two absent, and one abstained.
Thank you. Motion passed. Any questions? Commissioner Beardsley?
No questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Carroll?
No questions.
Councilmember Gearball?
Yeah, Mike and I earlier discussed, there's a concern or an issue with the PUD expires months before the extension does. So my recommendation would be that the PUD date and the site, final site plan expansion be the same. So that way, if anything doesn't happen before, what is it, May fourth, I believe it is, or something like that, both issues have to be dealt with again in preparation for that extension. I don't want to have a cor, I don't want to have a conflict between a date that goes longer than the PUD.
So you want to add that to the motion then?
Yeah, I think what we, instead of saying a one-year final site plan, we would make it a date specific, which would be?
May thirtieth.
May thirtieth.
Okay, Mike and Katrina, can you add that? We'll just add that to the motion when we do it.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Chief Hart, you have any questions?
No, sir.
Commissioner Haff is absent, Mayor Morrow is absent, Commissioner Troika, you're
abstaining.
Yeah, you can, yeah, abstaining. Thank you. Commissioner Young?
No questions.
And Commissioner Fosdick, no, no questions. Okay, Mr. Gearball, would you move? And Chief Hart, would you second to approve as the motion that we came on here, final site plan as a date certain for parcel eighteen eighteen oh one one seven oh zero one five?
Sure. Are there any comments from the developer or? Just check.
Yeah, I guess we should. Is the developer here? Is there any? I'm sorry.
It does not appear Mr. Damien is online.
Yeah, he seems to walk away. So I'll move, I'll go ahead and move to approve the extension to May thirtieth, twenty twenty one.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you very mu, Katrina, would you take the vote?
Commissioner Beardsley?
Aye.
Commissioner Carroll? Commissioner Carroll?
Aye.
Councilmember Gearball?
Aye.
Chief Hart?
Aye.
Councilmember Huff? Sorry, Commissioner Haff, absent. Mayor Morrow, absent. Commissioner Troika, abstaining. Commissioner Young?
Aye.
And Commissioner Fosdick?
Aye.
Six ayes, two absent, and one abstained.
Thank you. Motion is passed. We'll move to twenty nineteen, application from Nicholas Delphino for the one-year PUD final site plan extension for the Layer Farms Development located at sixty six 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 seven five Maple Road, Selene, Michigan, forty one seven six. Parcel number L twelve thirty three zero 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 one zero zero four. Mike, same thing here?
Yes, sir. Same exact thing. They're looking for a site plan extension of one year for this project due to COVID and similar to everything else that's been extended this year, mainly due to COVID. And we do have Tom Cover on the line from Midwestern Consulting. He's one of the engineers for this project to answer any question you guys may have.
Okay. The motion to acknowledge receipt of the September sixteen twenty twenty memo for, from interim city manager Green. Bill, would you move that? And Chief Hart?
Sure, I'll move a, that, I'll move that we acknowledge receipt of the September sixteenth memo from interim city manager Green.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, Katrina, would you take the vote?
Commissioner Beardsley?
Aye.
Commissioner Carroll?
Aye.
Councilmember Gearball?
Aye.
Chief Hart?
Aye.
Commissioner Haff is absent. Mayor Morrow, absent. Commissioner Troika?
Aye.
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
And Commissioner Fosdick?
Aye.
Two a, sorry, seven ayes, two absent.
Motion carries. Hey, Tom, if you're there, do you want to say anything about?
Oh, I'll just thank you, everybody, for considering this action tonight to extend the final site plan PUD for the project. We are moving forward and getting things in order for a start next year. And we really appreciate the opportunity and the positive result here. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Are there any questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Beardsley?
No, thank you.
Mr. Carroll?
Yeah, when will this expire?
We have it for September twenty third, twenty twenty one. It's not recommended to go longer than a year for site plan expense, extensions. So we're trying to give.
Yeah, and the PUD goes until December second, so one-year extension would be fine.
Okay.
Councilmember Gearball?
Just maybe for Mike, and we talked about, you know, how we're going to handle Maple Road next year and the sewer placement and everything. Is there any coordinating that we need to do in terms of how you start your construction next year in that project?
Yeah, that'll be something in the near future. Jeff, Mr. Fordice and I will work on and work with Tom to try to start coordinating that schedule to see how their timelines can line up with what we hopefully potentially want to do. So we'll work over that over the next few weeks.
Yeah, just something I wanted, as long as you're doing this extension, that we were looking forward to that because it gives us another year of hopefully delay so that we can find the funding to complete that project. Thank you. That's it.
Okay, Chief Hart?
No questions.
Commissioner Haff, absent. Mayor Morrow, absent. Commissioner Troika?
No questions.
Commissioner Young?
No questions.
And Commissioner Fosdick, no questions. Okay. There is a motion to approve the one-year PUD final site plan extension for the Layer Farms Development located at six six seven five Maple Road, Selene, Michigan, forty one seven six parcel number L twelve thirty three zero 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 one zero zero four. Commissioner Young, would you move that? And Commissioner Troika, would you second that?
I move to approve the one-year PUD final site plan extension for the Layer Farms Development.
I second.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Katrina, would you take the vote?
Commissioner Beardsley?
Aye.
Commissioner Carroll?
Aye.
Councilmember Gearball?
Aye.
Chief Hart?
Aye.
Commissioner Haff is absent. Mayor Morrow, absent. Commissioner Troika?
Aye.
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
And Commissioner Fosdick?
Aye.
Seven ayes, two absent.
Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Okay, we have, we have one last discussion item. Lowdy Township proposed master plan amendment. Mike, you want to give a little rundown on that? Pretty self-explanatory.
Yeah, it's pretty self-explanatory. And I think you guys did this right before I actually came to the city, as Lowdy Township was actually looking to rezone that entire island. But there is that Lowdy Township Island on North Ann Arbor Street, and they are looking to change their master plan for this parcel. Right now, technically, I'm pretty sure it's zoned agricultural, even though there are houses and everything there. But this would essentially change that zoning to residential office is what they're calling it. So naturally, whenever you change master plans, zoning ordinances, you have to send these layers out and it gives us, as the neighboring community, a chance to respond. So that's what this discussion item is for, to have you guys let Katrina and I know if you want to respond. And if so, how do you want us to respond? So if you, we can come to a little consensus tonight, we'll draft that letter of how you ever you guys want. If you want us to draft a letter, and we'll get it off over to Lowdy Township.
And I can give some background if you want, Scott.
Yeah, let's, let's hear, because I'm concerned with the change in that, their professional building, because they just put a bank in there. I guess that's the first thing that comes to my mind, I mean, with the drive-through.
Yeah, and I think that's one of the concerns where we had, I mean, from council's perspective, and even the issues was that potentially, when they wanted to rezone it last time, it would be that possible use. This time, it's supposed to be low intensity, but the question is how, what is defined as low intensity, looking at their, at Lowdy's zoning document to see what specifically are permitted uses. A bigger issue on it is, if I look at that document, it appears they're wanting to rezone more than just that island, Mike. Because there's, there's a number of islands that are across the street from that, too. When you look at.
Yeah, there's homes there.
So there's three parcels that are on the east side of North Ann Arbor Street that I think they want to include in this. And of course, from my perspective and some of the members of council is, it's all surrounded by, at this current time, surrounded by residential. This type of use, or my concern is that it's creating an island within our own city. Use of residential, but it's also allowing a use on property that do not pay taxes yet number of our services from the city. So there's no incentive for this to be brought into the city as a no longer as an island, but to actually be annexed. And we've been wanting to push these properties to be brought into the city so that they no longer are that concern at this point. They do pay triple water, but it doesn't address the true issue, which is our taxes and authority over the properties and zoning and all of that. So from my concern, what I've been putting forward is that any kind of zoning on this property that changes it from the residential use that it currently is and surrounded by is inappropriate.
Yeah, and seeing that, Dean, I do have some major concerns with that. You know, I guess I would have liked to have kept it sort of kind of residential the way it is. But I don't know what kind of a state we have and so forth. I guess we could, you know, spend money, if something really drastic comes in there, the city could be in spending mega bucks fighting it. But God, I don't want to get in that boat either.
Well, one of the things would be is to help us try and establish our case for annexation and to get this property brought into the city so that it can be appropriately realigned. It's so far into the city at this point in time, it really, it needs to come in. It should not be out in the
And I can't, I can't agree more. And I, I hope they attack it that way. Anybody else have any questions or concerns?
So are we saying that we would like to send a letter expressing concern? Is that the directive?
I think, I think we should. And express those concerns explicitly. And I mean, that's the best I think we can do, but.
Yeah, and it doesn't match our master plan with grounds, completely surrounds that piece of property.
Yeah, the standards we would apply would be, what would we do if that was ours? And that's not what we would do.
Not in that, okay. Even though there may be some grandfathered uses, but they don't apply for the overall zoning.
Yep. We kept that to the north of Waterworks, I think, with professional business and the rental property, if I recall.
Correct. And then we rezoned that one parcel to multifamily.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Any more questions? Okay, I have a motion to excuse the absences of Commissioner Haff and Mayor Morrow. Troika, would you move that? And Young, would you second that?
Move to excuse the absence of Commissioner Haff and Mayor Morrow.
Second.
Katrina, would you take the vote?
Sorry. Commissioner Beardsley?
Aye. Aye.
Commissioner Carroll?
Aye.
Councilmember Gearball?
Aye.
Chief Hart?
Aye.
Commissioner Haff, absent. Mayor Morrow, absent. Commissioner Troika?
Aye.
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
And Commissioner Fosdick?
Aye.
Seven ayes, two absent.
Motion carries. Okay, there's a motion to adjourn the meeting at seven fifty seven PM. Commissioner Young, would you move that? And Commissioner Troika, would you second that?
I move to end the meeting at seven fifty seven.
I second.
Katrina, would you take the vote?
Commissioner Beardsley?
Aye.
Commissioner Carroll?
Aye.
Councilmember Gearball?
Aye.
Chief Hart?
Aye.
Commissioner Haff, absent. Mayor Morrow, absent. Commissioner Troika?
Aye.
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
And Commissioner Fosdick?
Aye.
Seven ayes, two absent.
Very much, yeah.
Thank you.
Very, very much.
Thanks, all. Have a good weekend. Take care.
Thank you, Scott.
Thanks, Katrina.
Thanks again. All righty, bye-bye.